Slovakia and Malaysia. In the 90s, I came back from Japan to study music at Bethany and stayed in Linsburg again for a few years. Now that I'm retired, I decided to make Linsburg my permanent home. So I bought a house and have spent time since 2016 looking for ways to reintegrate myself into the community I know and love. At first, I imagined that I'd somehow be involved in the college, and I do participate in many music activities that are open to community members. But my main involvement has surprisingly turned out to be volunteering at Bethany Home. I do several music-related activities on the campus, and because my mom is an assisted living, I lead a music-themed discussion group over there almost every evening. Recently, I started doing similar volunteer work over in Marquette. The rewards of this service have been immense, and I form close ties with many of our senior citizens. It all reminds me of what we used to say about being overseas. These people give me far more than I give them. Of course, my experiences have not always been rosy. When Mom first moved to assisted living, both she and I faced many frustrations, and we often questioned the wisdom of moving off the farm in Berdick. I still can't understand why assisted living offers next-to-no activities for its residents. They say that the activity crew at Bethany Home is overworked and understaffed. Naturally, they maintain that assisted living residents are more than welcome to come over to the home for any or all activities. But we all know that that almost never happens. It's as if a great castle runs between Chestnut and East Swenson Streets. I also don't understand HIPAA and state regulations about privacy issues and procedures. Last year, one of the residents in assisted living passed away, and the people weren't informed for about a week. Somehow, that doesn't seem natural in a small town. Still, over the last few months, I've learned to stop complaining about points that are too complex for me to understand. After all, I know nothing about the pressures that the administration faces from the state. I know nothing about their financial concerns or staffing issues, so I've learned to just shut up and not ask any questions or really offer any opinions. Instead, I concentrate on giving my time and talents to hopefully offer some joy and friendship to all the residents I come in contact with. A few weeks ago, however, I found myself faced with a concern that has led me here today. I just sat down to start my men's coffee at Bethany Home on Thursday afternoon. Bill Carlson is, as you might imagine, one of the most loyal and vocal members of the group. As we were getting started for the hour, Bill asked the activity director, "We're going over to the Messiah on Easter, aren't we?" Her answer took me aback. No, she said, "We don't have enough staff on hand to do that. Besides, it's on a Sunday, and it's a holiday." "Don't you have any family members who can take you?" I slapped her stunned, saying nothing. And you should have seen the look on Bill's face. All I could think was, how many years did Bill haul people over to the Messiah from Bethany Home when he was the administrator? And how many years did he sing in the oratorical society? I frankly couldn't believe what I was hearing. For me, it's been a heartwarming part of sitting on the presser stage, waiting for the Messiah to start, to see those doors on the south swing open, and the wheelchairs come rolling in. This year, I keenly felt their absence because I have been witness to what led up to it. This time, I don't feel like shutting up and leaving the details to the powers that be. I feel that a line has been crossed. It is now a matter that concerns this whole community and raises the question, are we treating our senior citizens with the dignity they deserve? Now, I've been told the CEO of Bethany Home doesn't micromanage. It's quite possible that he doesn't realize that no residents were taken to the Messiah this year. Still, he is ultimately responsible for what goes on in his institution. I'm sure a lot of people didn't notice that a contingent from Bethany Home wasn't there that Easter. But I'm here to say, someone noticed. This is not okay. This isn't how Linsburg does it. I would like to ask you, the city council, to communicate with the Bethany Home CEO and the board of directors, and please voice your displeasure over what happened on Easter. Also, this may be an opportunity for the community to create some kind of task force to safeguard against all forms of discrimination regarding senior citizens, including cases of neglect. Let me say for all time that Linsburg is a place where no one is marginalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, very much. Just a little aside here to all the council members. This is the second time in the last two or three months and years that we've had some issues relating to our senior population that we need to pay attention here. I'm not sure where this falls, but it is twice now. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Right, were there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, here again. Mayor's report. We did raise the flags two Saturdays ago. I guess it will be Tuesday. And so you see the flags flying, and it's great. And we want to say again a special thank you to Bill Taylor or seeing that project through. We do have council, please remember that we do have on Monday, May 14, 5:30, our special study session. And I believe dinner was going to be provided that evening. And so we're meeting here, is that right? Okay. Capital improvement budgets will be presented that evening and discussed. Also, on May 15, 5:30, Solid Waste will have their... Is it an annual meeting? It's an annual meeting. All council members are invited to attend. I will be going, I believe Greg will. If anybody else would like to go, let us know. That's 5:30.
No, we have to have that reservation tomorrow.
So if you want to go to that...
If you want to go, you can listen.
I've never been to one of these meetings. I have no idea, but I probably should understand more about the Solid Waste people than we do back here. There is an important planning and zoning meeting at 7 o'clock again on May 15. I believe, Gary, that will be the discussion about the LED signage.
Yes.
So if any council members want to attend that, we'll listen in. You'd be very welcome to do something. And then our next council meeting is May 22.
Actually, it's the 21st.
Oh.
I can't type evidently.
Can't type, okay. It's May 21st, all right?
Monday, the 21st.
Also, this weekend is high school graduation. And on Friday is May Day, All Schools Day. And so if you're there, I will be riding in the parade. And so I'll wait that one, okay? No, you can't do that. You cannot throw candy, so it will not get in candy. All right. Then the following weekend, on the 20th of May, is Bethany College Memorial Celebration. Always an exciting time for a lot of families. All right, any other meetings that I need to take note of? The next item is a proclamation that I would like to read. And I think I would ask these two sense the sentences to come forward and stand here as I read this. Whereas, in 19th-century rural Sweden, many provinces and towns displayed their own histories and cultures in their daily clothing styles. And whereas, this clothing, fabrics and trims to stockings and headwear, told at a glance a vivid and detailed story about the wearer. And whereas, the city of Linsburg was founded on the plains of Kansas by Swedish immigrants in 1869, nearly 150 years ago. And whereas, Linsburg's cultural heritage remains vibrant today in visual and performing arts, fine craft, education, signs and symbols, celebrations, food and beverages, and quiet customs of local life. And whereas, Linsburg has earned wide recognition for its lively and enduring approaches to expressing this cultural heritage. And whereas, Linsburg has artfully meshed its immigrant heritage with the cultures of the U.S. of Kansas and the Smoky Valley. And whereas, Linsburg is pledged to find innovation in tradition in its next 150 years. And whereas, through research and attention to story and detail, Linsburg designers Tara Killingsworth and Carla Wilson have created a Swedish folk costume that is meant to represent the men, women, and children of our community. And whereas, these costumes' colors, cuts, fabrics, trims, and other details tell a meaningful story about Linsburg's living heritage, its relationships with Sweden, and its place in Kansas, the U.S., and the greater Scandinavian-American community. Be it known that on the 7th day of May 2018, I, Becky Anderson, mayor of Linsburg, hereby proclaim that the design by Tara Killingsworth and Carla Wilson is "Linsburg's Spence Folk Dress", Linsburg Swedish folk costume. In witness whereof, I have hereby set my hand and caused the official sign and the seal of Linsburg to be affixed this 7th day of May 2018.
Would you like to give us a little history of your...
Sure. We were wondering just how much information you want to...
Yeah, must be abbreviated.
Okay. We began this project in November, and we felt it was important that, because of our Swedish heritage and the communities in Sweden, they are represented by a costume, by a folk costume, that Linsburg should also have that. And there are so many here that are not Swedish by blood. So we thought it would be nice. So if we have a costume made, then we simply have to pick something we like. So we thought it would be nice, because we're Linsburg Swedish, to have a Swedish costume to wear for the entire community. Linsburg is made up of people, heritage from all provinces throughout Sweden. So again, we needed something that said, "We're from Linsburg", not what province are relatives from. We wanted it to represent not only our Swedish history, but our American history. And we felt that that was really important to incorporate. And we also wanted the community involved. So the first thing that we did was to random post on Facebook asking what words you associated with Kansas, Smoky Valley, and Linsburg. And then we asked what colors were the words. And that's how we came up with our color for the costume. And just something that is kind of a fun fact that came out of that is the colors of the costume are also the palette for the traditional folk paintings, current paintings in Sweden. So that just made another tie to it being Swedish. And so then other elements that we considered for the design... This is where Tara comes in. Maybe he knows the history of clothing.
So obviously, we take inspiration from the communities in Sweden that came to Linsburg, Verland and the wolf, that's their mascot. And then also with my background in historical costuming, we took into consideration the year that Linsburg became a community, and we pulled items from that period in the clothing design. So the bustles, princess seams, and items like that. We also considered what it would have been like here on the frontier and what we would have gone through. So in the men's costume, we've included a neck rack, so they would be set for a variety of things. We also included long pants. Most of our costumes here in town, people have breeches, but we did pants because that would have been more appropriate for that time. And the children's costumes kind of relate off of the adult costumes.
And some of the things you'll see in the little girls, the aprons. The fabric was picked because it looks a lot like what a printed feet sack would look like. So it's part of our American heritage. The jumper for the little girls is also the feet sack style jumper. One of the things that we did for the women's costume, we tried to make them very functional. Having grown up here in Swedish community and raising children, the serp has an option for front openings that allows a mother whose breast be the easy access. So you wouldn't... And if you think of the people on the prairie and pioneers at the time, they were also one of these conveniences.
We also took into consideration what's available to us at this time. So the main garments that we want to keep as the Linsburg Folk Dress. We would like for the patterns of the vest and the skirt to stay the same. And then the yellow, the olive, and the blue kikim. We picked solid colors because you're going to be able to find those colors in different ranges of fabrics. You're not going to find the exact same fabric throughout the next few years of what we picked, but you can at least pick the colors. And then the trim, we know we can continue to get because it's Swedish braids, we can't that in Sweden. So something else, we also thought about functionality now in the making of the costumes today.
So and then the hat that I have on is a design that was from early Louis V. And the hat that I have on is a straw hat because that would have been what they would have utilized at that time. Okay, so this was from early Louis V. And then so then we said, okay, but what should you have? Sort of for the summer because of the heat? Or maybe a wool for the winter because of the cold? And so we've left that up to individuals to decide what hat will work best for them. Typically, there are variations to a costume, and you'll see those in the communities in Sweden. And so and that the variations, like maybe it's a different color fabric for the scarf or the apron, or maybe it's a different color for the hat. And those variations will tell you in what parish they're from or what folk dance law they belong to. So we encourage the members of the community, like Bethany Church or Messiah Church, to say, "Okay, we're going to make the Linsburg costumes, but if you're from Messiah Church, then we're going to have blue hats. And if you belong to the adult folk dance law, then we're going to have another color apron." So then we'll also be able to tell then, if you're a member of what parish or belong to a dance group or something like that. So it leaves a little bit of creativity out there for everybody else here. Do you have questions?
Walk a little closer so we can see. Do you have your purse on, Tara?
Yeah.
Want to go back to purse?
Sure. So Carla actually did the main design of this purse. The piece of leather is Vossmalun.
Verland.
Oh, excuse me, Verland. And then the sunflower is a representation of Linsburg and Kansas. So get the idea coming from there to new place.
If you turn the map of Sweden upside down, Verland has the shape of the wolf, and the wolf's face. And so it's the map side. And that was the largest single roof that came to Linsburg. And so it's kind of a nod to those who originally started it from the beginning. Can you come up here and see what you saw in the picture?
I'm around the bridge.
For those of you that might not know, every province of which there are 25 in Sweden has their own costume. Sometimes they have even more than one costume. And so like a little community or whatever has their own. So now, this is quite a project. And I thank you to these two bright women who have done this. Linsburg has talked about having a folk costume on our own for probably 25 or 30 years, but they have made it happen. So let's all smile. Thank you, thank you, thank you, guys. Here it is. Okay, we're good?
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just in time for our 150th anniversary celebration. So if you don't have a costume or if you wanted another one, go see Tara and Carla. My pleasure. Thank you very much. All right, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
I'll second it.
All right, Jerry?
I don't know if we can get through this list in my part.
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I don't believe there's any appointments. Gary, do you have anything from the committee?
No.
All right. Is there any old business? Very many going on to new business. The Cox Communication, assuming that you all read that, without Greg here, I did speak with him today, and he feels that everything is fine on the agreement that he had worked with them on. So do we adopt this, Jerry?
Yes, just a motion to approve the agreement.
Why don't we have a motion to approve the franchise agreement?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I want to know, Gary, perhaps you can explain this. Is this an exclusive contract with Cox to be the only cable that's on our poles?
No, actually, Jerry can answer that.
She's at the...
She's here, Jerry.
I can hear it.
Fee and... Okay, so it's not exclusive. So if someone else gets our approval, they could use the same poles. And the other question I have is, how long has it been? The fee of $6?
On that one, I don't want the answer to.
I mean, maybe it's time to raise that fee. Isn't this similar to what we did a couple months ago with the Virginia Tech or whatever?
Yeah, and I think this is pretty standard, this fee.
Okay, I don't know.
I thought... Clarification, the motion is to approve the pole attachment agreement, not the franchise agreement. I think you made it, said franchise.
Yes. Okay, this is to approve the pole attachment agreement. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Won't beverage temporary license coming from the Midsummers Committee, I believe. And this is to, you can all read it there, hours of operation 7:00 to 12:00 a.m. on June 16, a Saturday during Midsummers Festival. Do I have a motion to approve this?
So move.
Okay. It's a ready session.
It's my understanding that the recommendation from staff is to decline the application.
No, that's a error.
I clarified that with our city administrator this morning. They have met all of the requirements, and we had everything in hand. And it was in plenty of time.
Okay. So everything has been spooked on that?
I'm glad, I'm glad you're...
Okay. Any other discussion?
We have a second. Chief, do you approve of this?
It's written in the laws, so it's allowed. I didn't ask you that.
Who has to enforce these things? Does this seem reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd just be curious to know if this is... Have they done this before?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I thought so.
But this time, it is why we have to do a bill?
Well, in Riverside Park.
Riverside Park.
Yes. But it will be a lot closer to the shelter up on North End as opposed to where it's located.
Where? Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next item is Chris.
We've had the bubblers in that golf course on for, I believe, five years now. And they've been kind of a maintenance problem throughout their life. And the company that we deal with is not very easy to deal with in getting parts. They want you to send these pumps back and have them gone through on a regular basis. We did find a shop that could fix them, and we went through them last year, and they've already showed signs of having problems again. So in dealing with Peterson Irrigation and having some discussions with them, they have different style bubblers or fountains out of the Smoky Valley Estates. And these are much better designed fountain, and they seem to have a real good service life to them, and they have a much better warranty. So we put some money in the budget last year to replace them. And after researching the cost, we actually found out that they're a lot less expensive than we thought. So we're able to get two this year for what we thought was going to be one. So that should cover it. So we're just looking for a motion to approve the purchase of DA-20 aerators from Peterson Irrigation for $3,150.
That is a motion? Why do you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the two-stot DA-20 aerators from Peterson Irrigation in the amount of $3,150.
Second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Are there two out there now?
There are two bubblers and one fountain. And these will replace the two bubblers. A different style of variation, but they will replace those two.
So we'll have one fountain and two?
We should have one fountain and... These are kind of a mixture of fountain, bubbler combination. They shoot about six feet in air before he has them out upon behind his house. And they look really nice. One of the good things about these is they can be left in here around. Not that we would do that, but they can be. That's just how much better designed they are than what we have currently.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye? All my favorites, and you take?
David?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Cory?
The next item is Ball Field Development proposal. This is a... We had a study session, I believe, on this. And we have met the state committee, Greg, the engineers from Schwaheken, Jim Oster from USD 100. And Greg and I met three times with these people and have gone through everything as far as what we need and what we can afford. And you see here, as Greg has delineated this out, our cost is $155,788. how it's, our cost is $155,788. What this will give us is a, a practice field, moving dirt. And that's about it. And the school district will pay the other half. These bids that we received, these people are ready to go. And so this work could begin immediately upon approval of the school board and this council. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm so moved that we approved the amount of $155,788 and zero cents for this.
Second?
Right, discussion?
So as, as I go back to the study session, this does stock, this does not stockpile all the dirt then.
No.
This is just strictly developing a one practice field. That's what it took to get it down to 300 and whatever.
That's right. And this, when it is all constructed, it will be ready to be played on.
In the fall?
Brass, there will be a backstop, there will be some minimal fencing. There will be no lights, there will be no bathrooms, there will be no bleachers.
There won't be duck outs either.
There won't be duck outs.
So again, the motion is for the base bid with none of the alternative, alternatives included.
That's right.
And the board meets next week, next Monday, next Thursday night?
So the funding is always the fun part, trying to figure out how we can do this. And I see there's some explanation there. I'm assuming that Greg has, has worked on this and determined how we can do this with what we have budgeted.
We have the other budget this time, yes. We, every year there, we transfer money, it's already here. $50,000 and we're not going to do that. And let's see, where else did we, the capital improvement reserve fund, $51,000. Equipment reserve, $25,000. This was, this was created on Greg's part. We worked very hard to figure out how we can do this and be a part of. And Beth, I don't know if you want to speak to this at all? The usage from the city and of an extra golf field, what will that mean?
I'm not sure, that's been discussed at this point.
The, we talked about in, in our last meeting, who can play on this? Anybody can play on this. It'll be open, you don't have, you're not going to turn on the lights, you're not going to open a gate. You just kind of go over there and be able to play. Which is what the request has been from the community, that we need that kind of space. And certainly from the school district, they were very much in favor of this. Right now, their teams travel over to Marquette to play on a field over there. And they are very much wanting to not have that happen anymore. And so kids will not be on the highway to travel over to Marquette during baseball and softball seasons.
Does a motion include approving the bids that are highlighted in our packet?
Yes.
I guess, so moved.
Yes.
My question I had is, some of them are drastically different. A third of the second last bidder. And I just wanted, are we confident that there was not a mistake or that we're getting what we, what we're getting here?
Yes. I mean, we went through line item by line item two weeks ago, whatever it was. And everything was agreed upon. And said it was adequate and it was good companies and reputable companies that people had worked with before, so yes.
And is there, does the city of Linsberg still have any kind of work in this to reduce the cost?
Yes, some.
But since there isn't electricity and curb and cutter and all that, probably not as much, okay?
This is a fairly bare bones kind of facility. And it is a lot of money. But in, people that have checked with other entities and all, a lot of these bidders that have done multiple baseball, baseball field developments. So this is how much it is. It's expensive. We also talked with Bethany College and, and said that they would be able to use those practice fields when, when they need them as well. And President Jones was very happy to hear that. I mean, because they've got a need as well. So when their fields are being used by our high school or by the public, if these, they want to use the practice field, they can do so.
I'm just drawing a little bit of the understanding of the spreadsheet. Total project cost, 382,76. But then it says our revised total project cost, 311,76. I'm trying to figure out where the $71,000 went savings. Because it does not include the alternates.
Because there is add alternate number three, remaining site development is $71,543.
I don't see a problem. But it does not include any of the alternates. I just want to make sure. Well, I see what you're saying, Corey. I mean, that alternate number three is the $71,000, like you referenced to that one. But I think we're safe in approving the $155,788 based on that's half of 311 and that's what's going to be, that the board will be facing, the school board will be facing it as well, so. I'm trying to figure out what we're paying for.
What we're paying for?
Oh, I think I, I think I figured this out, maybe.
So is there some line item in that?
I think we must have already contracted, approved the engineering process and the geotechnical report. I think that's the difference. Looking at the matter of the, looking at the top, okay, six or seven lines we've already approved. I'm assuming that's how we got the difference. So the total, the actual total cost is still 382,000 total.
That's the bottom.
But we've, must have already approved. Because the mechanical was already contracted. I'm just trying, I just draw a big number down.
So I, this is probably a question for after the vote, but does USD 400 remain optimistic that this can be further developed?
Yes. There's a lot of options about the land out there. But this is as far as they are willing to go and hopefully the city is trying to partner with them. We're having good discussions with Bethany College about this. It is a joint venture. And nothing has been, we're just talking and seeing what's best for everybody involved.
You do get a sense from the school board that this base bid is really all they want to bite off at this time as well?
Yes.
That was kind of what it was presented to me as one of the practice fields.
But the one thing I heard loud and clear was that it was, it just made good fiscal sense to move all the dirt at once because to, to, to redeploy that heavy equipment, to move all the dirt was, was, it would cost more the second time around.
The dirt contractor is not the person that got the price again? And this was long construction, not dirt?
Okay.
I think there was one contractor that backed away from even bidding the project as well after seeing the specifications and requirements. And so that might have changed strategy a little bit.
I see, okay, thank you.
Well, I guess just to confirm the urgency to get this passed is the schedule they have, have completed by September of this year or next spring. I'm assuming that's where C D S planned it and restings and what we were looking for.
And a lot of these people who bid are, their bid was good as long as they can get going on the work. And for all sorts of different reasons. And so there was a time factor to this as well. As far as they're available to do the work. Any others? Any major ones?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just, I was just looking at the bids again. I just, I just get nervous when I see a little bid being a third or a second.
There was, there was a couple of them that I don't think they want to jump. Corey?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, question for this. Golf cart lease?
We currently have a golf cart lease with Kansas Golf and Turf for five years. We are in our fourth year currently and we'll be doing a new lease next year. However, every year we have to be approved to go ahead and make that payment for each year. So I am recommending a motion to approve $75,000 to Kansas Golf and Turf for lease of golf carts for the Linsberg golf course.
So moved? Looking seconded, if we approve this lease, any discussion?
I could, or we just did this a few months ago. It does.
We have one more year's at Chris. I was out there yesterday and talked with Kristy in the clubhouse and we had no carts to run out. It was so busy the entire weekend. And my only thought to that was we'll kind of track how well things continue to go. And if there's any way to, you know, I asked the question, how many more carts should you have rented out? And she thought up to six more carts yesterday. Now I understand that's not going to be every day, but I think there's been a lot more involvement out there and a lot more play. Just throwing that out for food for thought for future, we might look at adding a few more carts in the next lease if this continues to be.
How many do we have? Ten. Can we have ten since the beginning? Somebody have that? Because that, you think so, ten? We had ten when we first entered in this.
Yeah. Storage issue might be.
With the lease, if we have a tournament, they do provide, they do bring out more for tournaments, but like some weekends, you don't have that much storage. Currently, we do have a lot, but we're going to scroll, we don't know how many that.
So is that something as we're having a beginning of golf season, if we need to be tracking this somehow?
They currently are.
They, about how many more they could have rented?
Right.
Let's see what our return on our best guess is.
That is, the, that's typically been very good, is my recollection. Is that right? Yeah.
Hey, any more discussion? Do you have the motion? Ready? Yep. David?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
All right, speaking to Beth. Are there any others? Any other discussion? All right, I don't have any more questions to return.
So moved?
Aye.
Everybody waiting for the camera, I should break the news.